Hello.
Yeah.
You can, you're ready.
Where did you, Eddie got off?
Yeah. He's on.
The pledge of allegiance. How bad?
That was good.
Lot of them. I mean, we're ready. Can everyone please rise, please, to be my leading pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with the great and justice for all.
Before we open this meeting, I'm going to turn it over to the Switzerland County Commissioners, and they are going to take a vote, I believe. So we're going to let them open and close their meeting first.
The purpose of this vote is to approve minutes from the Monday, July twenty first meeting that we just had two days ago. I want to make a motion to approve those minutes from that meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're closed. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, we got adjourners going. I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm officially going to open the, this is July twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting. It's a special meeting as listed. It's a joint meeting between county council, county commissioners, and the town of Bevy. Keep in mind that being a special meeting, it was advertised that it was only to be, it was advertised for the express consent of the innkeeper's tax and/or any related items to that. Therefore, any discussion will have to be limited to those particular items. The meeting was requested by tourism, so we're going to give them the opportunity to kind of run this. Then Lance is going to open, open their meeting as well because they have a forum. So I'm going to let him open it, then I'll, I'll take it back over.
Okay, um, thank you for being here today.
I'll sort of open his meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still going to go on here.
Danger.
Open the meeting, this is Switzerland County Council. On today's, uh, July, one second.
Alright, so in running this, I'm asking everybody if this is okay. My plan is to do this. Um, I'm going to open, open this up the mark and let him, give him the opportunity to explain himself, what's going on, you know, go over the ins and outs of the innkeeper's tax, and, um, where the funds go, explain the project, et cetera, to the best that he can. Um, then to try and keep this some kind of a organization to this, and I'm really not sure how to do it, so I'm just going to start from, as you're looking at this from left to right, allow each person to ask a question or two, go around the room, ask everyone, take notes, allow each person the opportunity to question and answer. Hopefully, by the time we get to the end here, we've, we've got a lot of it clarified, and then open it up for discussion after that. If everybody's okay with that, then that's, that's the direction I'm going to go there. You guys, I'll get to that. Alright, keep, keep in mind, we can only discuss the innkeeper's tax or relevant information pertaining to that. So Mark, it's on you.
Okay, uh, thank you for all of you being here today, you know, on so much short notice, but, um, it's been a process to get here, but, um, you know, we're to the point now where we need to hash things out, make a decision where we're going to go as a community on this park project, uh, which includes, you know, a pavilion and a stage, hopefully. Um, so you'll have the innkeeper's tax here, we've talked about before. Um, starting July first, you were eligible to pass that at any time. Um, you know, we'll have to get ninety days' notice to all those people that collect the innkeeper's tax, so uh, I think we've agreed on the January first is probably the cleanest state to do that for everybody, so yeah, theoretically, we, we need to get this passed by, uh, probably the September meeting at the latest. Uh, October could put us inside the ninety day window. Uh, assuming we, we move forward with this project, um, you know, what I envision, um, how this would work is, you know, the three percent innkeeper's tax should be collected. Uh, first bucket, I'm going to call it buckets. Uh, first bucket that gets filled is paying off debt service, uh, for this project down at the park. Uh, second one would be your reserve fund, just in case, you know, there needs to be for an emergency. Um, next one would be a maintenance fund, and then the last bucket, um, needs to be for promotion and, you know, filling this, um, event center or pavilion throughout the year, not just once or twice a year. Um, yeah, that would probably use up most of that money each year. Um, but that is not the only money from a tourism standpoint that we would put in for this project as well. Um, I'm going to steal a line from a colleague of mine. When they built the Warren County Sports Park near Kings Island, ten, fifteen years ago, I was around that, and he described that as our convention center, but it doesn't have walls. It just happens to be soccer fields and baseball diamonds. So in a way, I look at this project as tourism's convention center. It just happens to be a stage and a pavilion, so, um, you know, my future budgets as I move forward, I intend to, you know, redirect some of our funds that are going elsewhere. Um, some of the money that goes to the Swiss Wine Festival now because we're renting tents and all that can be redirected into this. Um, so, you know, is tourism will put money into this project from its five percent to help programming, put stuff in that, um, park more than just the wine festival or First Fridays. Uh, it's our intention to do some, um, version of what you see in Lawrenceburg or Madison, or, you know, suburbs of Indy or other places around the state. Um, and a lot of, you know, tourism entities do that as well, so, um, you know, we're not just building it to build it, we're building it to, as an investment, to draw tourists into the community, and that's what this asset ultimately is for, is to draw people in. Uh, we'll still, still do, you know, the same thing that we're doing now, uh, but we just have to be, but this will be one of our main focuses, uh, moving forward. Um, so, you know, we'll have a year of transition probably if we move forward because this will be built next year. Um, and that gives us a year to really, you know, iron out the details of how we're going to manage this, run it, fill it, um, you know, run the events and everything like that. Um, so I think we're in a good place there. Uh, so when it's all said and done, this thing will be built, managed, repaired, maintained, and sold, all by innkeeper's tax. Yeah, the, the original five percent or the three percent that's going into the capital improvement, capital costs of this project. Um, so that's where I think we are, you know, as you guys get together so we can hammer out the details of what the county and the town wants to do about specifics. Uh, since this is basically going into a city park or a town park, um, that's kind of where we are at this point. Any questions?
Well, like I said, we'll go around the room here, let everybody a chance to hopefully announce a question instead of having a a mess, and try to keep this under control and, and for that matter, try to keep it timely. So I guess I'll just, again, I'll, I'll skip myself and Lance to come back to us because theoretically, we're running this, so, um, I, I'll just start with Randy, honestly.
I mean, who's going to carry the, who's going to carry the load, who's going to carry? This, this money won't be immediate. Some will be, we're going to have to get money to build this project in the year.
Okay, um, so the Recreation and Tourism Commission, which the county puts our five percent into, um, you know, we have a balance of seventy, eight hundred thousand dollars, and I've given, I think, every one of you that information. Um, real quick, that buildup over time because of COVID, and my predecessor having health issues in twenty and twenty-one, so there's about seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in there. And I would think the commission would be agreeable to put that seed money out front because the earliest you'll see this tax money come in would be April thirtieth of next year, May first, just because of the first quarter and the thirty day lag in there. So to get started on, you know, any um, design, you know, checking with the state about building down in the park, um, because, you know, it is in the, in the flood area potentially, getting all those questions answered, I think uh, the court of commission would front that money. And it's going to be the tour of the commission anyways that's paying the bills later on once the tax money flows, so it's, they're just kind of prepaying that out of the five percent. It's going to come from the same fund when it's all said and done, but that money's there right now.
Do you think you have anything else? Wayne?
And have you had anyone come out and do like an assessment for the flood plain? Um, have you had anyone?
Not yet. I think that's where we're at, we're at the point where we're agreeable to move forward. I think we say, okay, we, we think we want to do this. Uh, we have a commission meeting on Monday night. I think we can, you know, uh, have that meeting and move forward, getting that stuff done because that's going to cost some money to do that, and put that money out. Uh, so I think we're in that neighborhood, so we, I think we can put that out, get that taken care of. So, and I haven't done it yet, but we can get that done.
In what part of the park are you looking at putting the, the pavilion in?
Uh, this is me, just generally, my thought was, uh, kind of how it's set up for the wine festival. Uh, pavilion would be on that blacktop area, and they call it the first baseline of the ball field. Stage would be out in left field, if you will, maybe squared in the world, basically. Um, and that tends, I mean, watching the flood last year, that tends to be the highest park of the highest point of that section of the park before it rises up into town, so, um, basically backing up also to the wine festival bar, if you will. So that's the general area. It, it could rotate ninety degrees depending on what, um, you know, what engineers say, or, you know, there's questions I might not have thought of that maybe it should go this way, but that's the general area, the general concept.
I would like to interject just one thing in a quest, the question you asked. We need to really clarify whether this is a flood plain, the floodway, or the flood fringe. Those will all determine the accessibility, the usability, and/or the likelihood of getting this thing constructed. Who do you have, Scott?
I have two questions. So is tourism going to own this, whatever?
I don't think to-
Who's going to own that's my big-
That's a question that the town and the county, I think, need to, to determine. Uh, so I don't think I can answer that question. I think that's where the town and the county need to come up with an agreement. Uh, this, this fund and the tourism commission, um, you know, will oversee the funding, the allocation of funds. Um, and if you pass this, this is a twenty year tax. Um, it, it sunsets in twenty years, so.
You said tourism would take responsibility for-
Uh, two, two separate things. So there's the tourism commission, and then there's Switzerland County tourism. So this is the three percent, and this is the five percent. Now, this three percent is going to get used up between the different buckets, but I'm also saying from my budget from Switzerland County tourism that's in place already, that, you know, we'll allocate resources into the marketing promotion and getting events in there. Let's say I'm going to treat this like it's a convention center, it just doesn't have walls, um, so.
Maybe this is a question for right now, but I think that really needs hammered out. As far as who's going to own this, who's going to be responsible for it, who's going to ensure it's not contagious, especially after twenty years. Goes away, stacked, re-up it, can we re-up it? Revenue generated by this, where does that go to? Property. Own this center. Tourism willing to accept all the expense and liability of having this with the-
I would, I don't know the answer to that question, if it would be tourism or the commission. And I think that's where we collectively here need to hammer that out and, you know, call the people we need to call and figure out what's the best course of action there.
I like, I like this whole idea.
I mean, I'll give you a, a quick hit at it. When, when I was in Cincinnati twenty years ago, it was kind of a similar thing, just a lot of small, bigger numbers. But we passed a tax name to the county to expand the Cincinnati Convention Center. It's a county tax, but the city owned the convention center, so it was the county tax essentially paying for that. And the city owned it, insured it, and all that. I'm not saying that's the case here, but, um, that's how I've seen it done in the past and something like that. But that's for you guys to figure out, or all three of us to figure out.
Other question, essentially, is, do you have any idea how much money it's going to take? Due, due to, if plans drawn up, permitting, architect-
Initial conversation that I had with some architects and engineers down at the park a year ago, they felt comfortable that we could do this from, you know, one point two five to one point five million.
I think he's asking the initial upfront calls.
Oh, sorry.
How much money are, how much money is going to have to, yeah, how much money is going to have to be spent for us to have a definitive design? And, uh,
I don't know the answer to that question, but, but now we're to the point, you want me to ask those questions, I will get those answers.
My, my thinking is coming. I would hate to pass this tax. And if it goes into effect, in a year from now, we find out. And now we impose a tax that is, I'm not saying isn't necessarily of any benefit, but doesn't go towards anything that we had intended.
I agree with that. Um, yeah, we need to get, so I said, I think we, if we go to the commission Monday night, tourism commission, um, you know, ask for those funds to be, you know, allocated, and then we, then we get that work done. Uh, ultimately, it's going to be the tourism commission that does that, gets those answers and-
That's something you think that they can have done with their eight hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, I wouldn't think we could come anywhere close to that.
I wouldn't either, but, I mean, could-
What I'm saying is, we have that money set aside.
Can they take that money, they says, uh, and tell us, hey, we can build this legally. This is all a go. Here's an estimate on building it, and have that through those five, that September meeting, so that if it is a go.
I think that's more reasonable, yeah, I mean, if, I just think the tourism commission would want to see, you know, a soft commitment from both entities to, to do that, and I think that's where we are. And we may not get the answers we want if we do this, you know, from whoever we get the study from. But I think, I think we're to the point now where, um, the commission would be more willing to put the money, invest the money into this, um, to get that final answer. As I said, you, I don't expect you to pass this tax, so you have all the answers you want, so.
Me personally, if you guys did that, this is my soft commitment. I would be in favor of this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I have every-
I have that information.
I have every-
You're going to have a general discussion.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of us are going to have all that, so let's go ahead a minute.
So I just want to touch on a piece that he said, you, in your opening comments, you used the word sold. What is that? What were you meaning by when you said that word sold?
Oh, I saw a comment about what my former colleague said about a sports, sport.
You said, uh, for the property would be bought, built, and sold.
Yeah, that, that was your comment.
You did say that, because I, I had a question on myself, which kept quiet. I don't think he meant to say it that way.
I don't know what I said there.
That, that, I believe that was almost purport of him, like said, right back.
Yep. Anyway, I, I get that you're going to pay for God, that, because that ties into what Scott was talking about. But when you get to the word sold, you're using you guys.
I must.
I'm, I'm all of a sudden, I'm backing away from the table, I go.
Well, I must have misspoke, because I don't, what was, what did I, what was the full context of what I said?
It's exactly.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's the funds should be, would be, would be, yeah, would come entirely from, you know, the, the innkeeper's tax, and it would be, I believe, I believe purport of him, it was the bought, built, and sold by that, with that money.
Oh, I'm, I think I meant sold as a entity to, you know, react and-
Is that what you're talking about? Was that the selling of the venue?
Not the act, not the actual selling of the venue. I'm talking about marketing and selling it to people to come into it.
Concerts or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like, second, if I was selling, selling a, selling a meeting room or something like that, that's, that's probably-
I didn't count Carl's, I go, I did.
I, I, I apologize.
Don't worry, you ask it. Matt, you still have the-
Certainly, okay, so, um, and I think the theme is doing the same, how much is tourism? How much are you guys going to contribute? And so, I almost feel like we put the cart in front of the horse. If you got a commission meeting, maybe this meeting should have happened after that, so you'd have an answer for us to what Scott was, because my question was the same thing. Of your eight hundred thousand, are you guys willing to put up the, the fee costs for permits, the insurance, the initial build, uh, specs, all that stuff out of your funds? Um, other, other counties around, uh, Indiana, I see that the tourism does put in X amount of dollars, they don't expect it all to come from the tax. Um, and how many years? I mean, have you thought about that? How many years? Is it a ten? Is it a five? Is it a fifteen? And if it doesn't get built within the first year, are you willing to go into an agreement before we, we vote on the tax? Are you willing to say if, if we don't cut ground and this thing isn't built, I know you said a year, but if something happens and it's not, the deal with this, with this taxes from our lawyer, the county lawyer, is once we vote on this tax, we got to have commitments in play, otherwise tourism controls the tax for whatever many years it is, regardless of what the project is. And I think somebody mentioned, started mentioning that. But I want confirmation, if we're building this project and it can't be built, that you guys are turning the money back over to us, not creating other projects with that money. Because this is for state-
Turning it back over to the county?
You're going to come back to us and say, we can't build it, we didn't get a permit. But how do we, how do we state that that's not going to happen?
Uh, I would think there has to be an agreement between the county, the town, and the tourism commission. I mean, it's a three-way group.
So that's a question for your commission on Monday night. So the other part, the other part is-
Yes, because in what, what you're saying, keep in mind that the tax is nonredactable. Once it's, once it's set forth, there, there are no checks back. It's coming, the money's coming. We just want to ensure, uh, that's not my turn.
So you're saying, so basically, if, if for some reason this would not happen, the money would be turned back over, the funds off of the tax?
Yeah, Keith, I'm going the same, same direction that's, that Scott is. Tell me, tell me what, make sure, let's make sure we can get everything before we vote for a tax and find out how the thing can be done.
Absolutely.
Well, the one thing- Let's try to stay on track here, get around the room first, and then, then we'll open for other discussion. Matt, you got one more.
I'll, uh, I'll, uh, just, I'll leave it at that. Sure, my others, I think some of the other stuff I have, sorry.
Well, the one thing, though, is it's not a tax on the, on the people of Switzerland County. So just so the public understands that, it's an innkeeper's tax for people who are staying, say, at Belterra. It's an increase in, say, the rate for the tax. So you had said that there were three, there were three areas that this tax could possibly go to be used for. So it's this project, but what were the other two?
Well, tonight?
No, the other night, you were saying that there was actually, if by chance this didn't happen, there were four other buckets, the way the state statutes and stuff-
Yeah, the way the state statute raised Riverfront Park, um, project, uh, the tourism, then the rest, you go to tourism for marketing. Um, I don't remember the, but, uh-
No, but it was, if you, we increased the in-tax by three percent. That three percent can be designated in one of three different ways. And this project was one of the ways, but there were two other ones, and I didn't catch what they-
Yeah, I think one was definitely the, the marketing aspect of promotion of the project.
If the project doesn't happen, you won't need marketing of it.
Yeah, I don't know what the specifics, I don't know if it really specifies if this doesn't happen, when it goes to-
Yes, three, there was three, there was three, and Garrett, Garrett asked about it too, but there was three different funnels that these additional funds could be used to. And I can't remember for the life of me what to say. So that was, that was my one question. The other question was as far as with steps, one, definitely, the first step's going to be determining flood plain, flood fringe, and whatnot. Second step's going to be engineers with, can it be done, can it not be done?
The key word there, I think, when you look at it, is D and R approval.
Yeah.
D and R approval dictates the majority of what you're asking. It's going to have, it's going to require the engineering already being in place. It's going to determine the, 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 the level of the elevation and/or floodway, flood fringe, all that stuff. Um, it's also going to have the structure in it so that it will have movable parts and stuff through it. So in my opinion, what we're asking him to come up with is D and R approval. D and R approval will circumference all of those in one. This is my opinion of it.
And then the other thing is, we keep talking stage and pavilion. In my opinion, it needs to be done in stages. Either stage or, or pavilion first, and then to move forward from there, not the entire game, you know, all at once. So that's just my, my opinion. That was my main, my main questions. And the other one was, with the innkeeper's tax, you had said, the way that it's worded in statute, um, we had talked about campgrounds and/or whatnot. And that is the statute, but you had said that some of the tourism, but when you talk to some of the state tourism, they had said it's not really done, all the counties really don't do it that way.
Yeah, I showed, I talked to Garrett last time I was here, two, three weeks ago. And I got same clarification, I basically got. The actual statute does not include campgrounds. Now, what is out there that's creating all this confusion, there's a hand guide and a guide that kind of has, has that in there, and that's what's creating confusion. I mean, I mean, that's, that's more money for the project and for tourism if it's in there, so, I mean, I'm not against it or anything, I just, I mean, when I've, when I've gotten it clarified, and I'll show you, I'll show you my emails later.
Okay, so I want to clarify that.
Because I think your point is that we all know there's between a thousand and twelve hundred open and quote unquote sites or areas. In all fairness, you're, you're, you're starting to hit the same number as Belterra. Therefore, if in fact Belterra was not here anymore, there's your funding for the, to get this, keep this project moving.
Exactly.
But I do know that it's White County that has a special provision to do that for campgrounds and RV parks. And I guess that's been around for a long time, but they, they are a specific county in the state that has this provision to do that. So the precedent is out there. But they said, from what my understanding is, the actual language does not have that in there, but there's a auditors or, um, handbook or something out there that kind of has some confusing language in it. And that's what's creating problems throughout the state, because I, well, I asked two weeks ago, I was the third person to call her that day about the various same thing. Um, so this is kind of an issue in the state.
That's definitely my main question.
Okay, now I'll get you, I'll show, I'll, I'll forward you her emails to me.
Okay.
You're up.
Uh, Scott asked my question. I also want to ask about entrance coverage and, you know, who maintained that, kept it, ownership and all that, and then my other one was on the sold word that Matt brought up, so mine are of a nature.
Hill, you have anything?
Yeah.
What about everybody talking here?
I know, we need to talk on this, so.
Um, I guess, I'm just trying to remember what our attorney said. I thought that, I know that the way the law was passed, it mentioned the commission, the tourism commission, but I thought our attorney said that our existing tourism board qualifies for that. There's enough representation on that that there doesn't need to be a new commission, so my take on this is that our existing tourism board owns this project. This is their baby. I mean, it's going to be on town property, their, their land, so you guys have to sort that out. That's the owner of this. That's, that's what I took from what Garrett said. It wasn't going to be like a separate commission for this.
No, it would be that, uh,
Existing board.
Recreation and Tourism Commission, whatever its official title is, that is the commission of record, and I think that's what is in the statute.
You got them? Um, I've got several of them, but I'm going to try to, well, get it down to a couple over here, because a lot of us are going to get injured when we get into talking about committees, which I know that's common. So, um, I guess John Bond's in the room here, uh, isn't this the quintessential definition of, of economic development? Isn't that? Let's, let's, let's define economic development and, and, and explain to me how this is not exactly what that is. So my question to you is, have you contacted John about some of this and/or, you know, is there a potential to get assistance as well through, through economic?
Yeah, we've talked about, uh, things throughout the process throughout the year about, you know, pulling out of the different funds from different directions to help fund this project, and, um, but we're kind of, it's kind of, we're at those crossroads like with everything here. So now, if, if we're going to accelerate this, those, those conversations will definitely accelerate and see what additional funding we can get from elsewhere, uh, to help alleviate the pressure that, you know, on this tax down the road.
Um, the only other thing I've, it's kind of been touched on already, but I would like to see, um, should, should we, you know, giving, get you our blessing moving forward. One of the things that I want to make sure of is, and obviously there's a gauntlet to jump through to get this, but is, is, in, in fact, ensuring what, what we're putting in money about. You know, do we have the, do we have the ability to ensure it, and to what extent, you know, that needs to be in the comprehensive plan right out the gate, in my opinion. Alright, I'm, I got two questions, which everybody else did too, so I'm not going to go on anymore about that. So I think we need to open this up for general discussion as this was headed, and all, everyone out here, the opportunity to ask any questions that they've got.
You know, my, my question that I think they asked in the commission's meeting was, uh, you know, given for public record, who, who's going to take care of the cleanup if, if we do have a flood? was, uh, you know, get for public record, who, who's gonna take care of the cleanup if, if we do have a flood? And secondly, is, uh, I would like to see if the tax applied to the campgrounds of this day, you know, it's five dollars a hundred. They're, they're not gonna stop camping here because, because of five dollars.
That's, that's pointed out so many times over and over again, it's for a tourist destination. That's what we're saying.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, same thing.
Uh, to answer your first question, you know, I'm gonna assume this, but you know, since it will be downtown property and just like this year, you know, you know, there was cleanup down there. So I would think there'd be some joint partnership between the tourism commission, if that's the way it goes, and the town, you know, for all those maintenance agreements, um, repairs, anything like that. There would be, uh, yeah, those agreements put in place between the two entities.
Yeah, I'd make sure I would assume that when you pass Jeremy and his board overtime.
Who does the cleanup right now?
We do.
You do?
Same thing the city of Madison does, same thing the center. From my aspect, I mean, we need, we would need additional funding to take, take care of those areas more specific. I'm not trying to speak on behalf of my board, but we, but we would, we would need that for those specific areas. Um, but we take care of the cleanup down there for the most part, same as, uh, and actually two are the cases, some of them from Madison, Lawrenceburg, we're all real close to same flood level. The only honestly, what, in my opinion, talking about river, riverbanks, you know, reviews and parks and stuff, in all fairness, we kinda got a little bit of advantage over because we don't have to shut down all our roads and stuff, you know, to, to have it in there down there. Gives us the opportunity to shut it, clean it up, open it back up, and you're moving forward. So we have a, a little bit of form of time, a little bit more time to do it and or therefore it's not as pressing and et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I'm not, as far as that, that really wasn't one of, from our standpoint, I don't think it was one of our, one of our concerns because you gotta clean it up anyway, you're just adding a couple of times to it.
And we even, we even pull in the fire departments to help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We first, it's not this year to do it. Yeah. That's not, that doesn't scare me as much as what will, what will be entered as far as like three times down through the flood, that's not be taken out. That's my bigger concern as far as weather applies.
That's why I pointed out what, what Kerry had said, you know, is the front flood fringe, the floodway, floodplain? What's the elevation of this thing? Do you have a final elevation? Do you think this thing is gonna turn?
I also wanted to clarify, you were talking about stage and pavilion. Can you, um, can you give us more of a detail of what that means? Cause I know Kim said something about doing it in like stages, the stage and then the pavilion. Is that a, is that a, are you meaning the stage with a pavilion over the stage? What are you talking about?
Two separate structures.
Okay.
So picture the park down there, you know, where the beer tent is for the wine festival. Build a permanent structure, what I'm calling the pavilion. You know, basically an eighty by a hundred or a hundred twenty foot structure, um, that you can hold events in there. The initial idea when I first thought about this was replacing that tent specifically so that wine festival doesn't have to rent it. But also using that for, if you do have concerts down there, you have an under, undercover area as well. So that would be on that first base side on that blacktop. Then you'd have a lawn in between that, then you would get to a stage. Um, yeah, not as grand as Lawrenceburg's. Uh, you know, I would ask you to look at, um, Franklin, Indiana, Lawrenceburg, Kentucky, some stages there, something along those scales. Uh, but basically a stage, a lawn, and then the pavilion here. So that way you've got some options there through weather, other events. Uh, I know when I went down to Lawrenceburg, Kentucky, they actually have their prom down there. So you'd have a place to do stuff there. Um, a pavilion I looked at in Ohio, they, they run it out for weddings and other events like that. So that would give you flexibility to diff, do different events right there on the river. That we had to use all.
We've seen one use, uh, a while back here in North Carolina, Kerry, and they used it for, um, a farmer's market on the weekends. They would one, one, one day a month, they would have a large farmer's market there and if it rained or didn't rain, they used it. So that was something I kinda do out there. I thought, yeah, I think I told Kim that.
Farmer's market swap meet?
Yeah, swap meet, stuff like that.
Yeah, but you have a covered place down there that says permanent, that, you know, you can use it at a moment's notice.
I'm not trying to sway by one way or the other. I'm just answering questions. I, ideas that I was coming up with trying to, you know, I'm completely in the middle, so I'm just.
But my whole thing is, do you build, do you build the pavilion first or do you build the stage first? To me, doing both at once might be a lot to bite off. So how my brain was kinda looking at it is maybe do the stage first. Let's see if tourism can bring in concerts and or whatnot, you know, to, that are actually gonna bring in revenue to the county, cause I don't want it to be down there and be a graveyard where we don't have any events other than the wine festival. Then we're right back to where we started.
Yeah, I would say the stage is number one and the pavilion would be one A. I mean, a lot of these other comparable places don't have that pavilion per se, but this just happens to be how we use that space as a community throughout the year and can use it. So just kind of an opportunity to do both.
Wine festival's gonna happen irregardless.
The only thing that I feel like against that, that it is, is the only reason I see, I agree with, I understand what you're talking about. But to me, every time you start one project, fade off, it's gonna cost you more to start that second project.
Yeah, I see that too.
Do it all. And then you'll be.
And I can, I completely agree with what you're saying, develop the need for the second. However, you, you are gonna, you do need to look at the financial difference between.
Yeah.
Just on the start.
I see what that's, I guess. My whole thing is, the wine festival happens anyway. I just wanna make damn sure that if we're doing all this, that we are gonna get promoted, we are gonna be able to have other.
Well, that's wrong. Yeah, that's what I said.
I a hundred percent the same way. I'm a present wine festival. I, I don't wanna. I'm gonna put, whatever this number is, a million, million and a half dollars, this thing can only be used for that. I don't make the walk around since that cannot cost that much money.
That's why I said I'm, I'm committed from my standpoint, from the tourism side, the five percent tax that's in place right now, dedicating a portion of that budget into, you know, you gotta pay for a band to come in, you gotta pay for this to come in. Dedicating a, it's a good portion, I'm not saying, a nice portion of our budget to make that happen, to get stuff to come in, just like Lawrenceburg does. You know, they had to pay for the action to come in. Uh, so, you know, I'm, yeah, I will submit that budget easily to, to the commission, the tourism commission, and that will be one of our primary focuses moving forward.
But it's all a moot point until we get the D and R, until we know what's.
Yeah, well, this is assuming, this is assuming this moves forward and it's in place. You know, honestly, moving into the late twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, you know, that will be, you know, a chunk of our budget will be to make, to make stuff.
Maybe it'll need to be a survey done to make sure where lines are and everything else.
Yeah, I think all those things, Mark, are that, is that upfront cost that everybody's talking about. And I mean, uh, somebody made the comment, this is a tax on everybody. It's a tax on a lot of people with individual businesses that host the hospitality. We gotta look at them the same way. I think that's only fair. But I mean, I, I guess with these financials as important as Scott and Kim's comment about, you know, the upfront cost, do you have a financial, are you going to create a financial plan that is going to be shared with the public as to how this thing's doing, overruns? I, I, now, I'm not here for, I know you weren't, for this building. And all I've ever heard about this building is the overruns and the people weren't aware of what this thing really costs. And that, uh, I'll be honest with you, public has said, that's a concern. Some are very concerned that we're trying to build something in a floodplain. But I think that's been subtle here, D and R since, you're not doing it there, you're just not doing it there.
Do you have a backup location?
Uh, yes, yeah. If, if we get to that point, then we can talk about that.
John, talk to John, you know, steel frame, concrete structure, vastly different, the tech building.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the main thing. Any canopy you're gonna have is gonna be, you know, that's, that's, that stage this year would have been about five feet underwater. You know, and any canopy on a stage is gonna be another ten to fifteen feet above that. Yeah, is there a risk? Yeah, if it gets that high, we've got big problems to begin with everywhere.
I think you were referring to the call, there were the building calls down there, right?
Cause. No, I mean, literally like an open sided steel structure built on concrete that gets flooded.
It's a concrete.
Is you're gonna have to pick up a lot of sticks and wash butt.
Right.
You build this tech building down there. It'll ever be just darn stupid.
Well.
Big difference.
Yeah, and that comes to, is it, will it have sides? Will it not have sides? Will it have this?
I was using the example of, I'm, I'm looking at what I've heard about this building, sheriff.
Oh, yeah.
All these cost overruns that were not shared with the public until everything was done. My question is, how open are you? You know, you guys need to have a financial plan and it needs to be shared as this is ongoing, whether once quarter, until it's all built so that everybody's wide open on it.
These are public funds, even though, even though it's innkeeper's taxes.
Whatever, whoever agrees.
Engineering's gonna be at least thirty.
Yeah, I would assume you're gonna, I, I'm just guessing that, that to get it through D and R approval, you're gonna throw fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand. I'd say, I'd say no, that, that, that trash in with would put it with cover. You know.
But I think you're all comfortable with the commission doing that, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you guys are willing to fund that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I know you, you said, you can't.
I can't say that.
You said it multiple times, you personally, we don't know where your commission is on it.
Yeah, agreed. But I, I think if the commission understands that, you know, council wants this, this council wants that, I think they would move easily to authorize the funds. Again, we've got the money in the bank that, you know, we could do that, you know, Monday night and get rolling Tuesday.
So you're, you're, this is gonna become redundant to the point where we keep going back to the one point five eight dollar question, which is camp.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. There's no, it's been talking about this all night, if that's what I'm hearing. We're gonna wind up right back here. Bottom line is that I, I believe generally speaking, you are going to have our permission to move forward with this project or the taxes, if it's due.
Yeah.
Right.
Let's put it this way. If it's payable and insurable.
So the commission put money out, uh, to allow me to get this to happen. So, you know, we've already invested money into this process, the commission has. So I don't think they're stopping at this point. So this is just the next, you know, next investment.
Somebody's gonna have to spend fifty thousand dollars to do it.
Oh, no, that's, that's, it's not the county, it's not the town, it's the commission. That's where the money.
Well, that's what you're saying, but you haven't talked to your commission to give a blessing. I hear, I hear.
You'll have your answer by your next council meeting.
Yes, we will, yeah. Because.
And you're all more than welcome to call Monday night to our meeting, uh, six o'clock at, uh, the tourism office if you want to.
Teresa.
Yes, as being on the tourism board, we've had several conversations about this. And I don't know of any reason it wouldn't pass the vote on Monday night. Because we already had, we already had fifty thousand dollars in mind that this upfront engineering's going to cost. And I will tell you guys another thing, I haven't researched it. I heard yesterday afternoon that Madison's gonna go to, go to increase theirs again. They're already at what, the eight? Now, I will check into this, not that it makes any difference. But I also believe the income generated by this event center, okay? It's gonna bring tourists, it's gonna help businesses, things to do, bring more people in, people to live here, people to pay taxes here. And when Mark was talking about the buckets, the three buckets, that's because he likes to break things down like that. He's already been working on a plan to hold back funds out of this or that. But I want everybody to know that we are not going to be then slashing the nonprofits that come to us for money. No, I think this is gonna help grow everything here. And eight percent is not, I mean, I've traveled quite a bit and I don't look at a bed and breakfast or innkeeper's tax at eight percent as being anything. I have checked into that statute a little bit, but that's for the attorneys. Yeah, that's just my opinion. Of course, I'm for it. I think it'll be good for the area. I mean, I'm not gonna be in business here another forty years, but I think, I think it'll be a good thing. And we have, when you talk about the financials, Matt, our financials are very detailed at all of our meetings. We have everything. I mean, these line items, Mark, Wilma keeps very good track of this and Mark's very good financially, so.
Not Wilma, I can't imagine.
Yeah.
I gotta answer.
Yeah, she taught, she learned at the school. I'm like, hold on, we're at the school. But no, I think it's a positive project for the area. And, you know, with growth becomes more growth and something. Just my opinion.
And the only other thing I had, I mean, I know there's concern about who's gonna hold it. I, I almost, I don't see any way that it wouldn't be ultimately all under the town's ownership. The only thing, the, the only way, my, my biggest fear is just what you said, after twenty years when this is gone, how would keep it going? Would we use money that when people book events there, it's just set up in it, you know, set it up in fund and start doing that? Where does that, when do you cross that line when that money goes into the fund? The very first event?
That tax, that tax wouldn't have to go away in twenty.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that, that's my fear. In twenty years, I probably will be around anyway, but I don't want it to go away. You know, I want it to stay, I want it to be.
The events are, are getting revenue. So that revenue would then go into maintenance buckets.
We need to have some sort of plan day one.
For what, for fun that goes into it.
Exactly. Go ahead and set aside something at the beginning. And that's where, that's where that. That's where your financial plan should come into play. You should be able to show where your revenue's moving to. It's not just a recurring, I'm gonna spend everything, but.
And, and, and I don't think that, that all of the net goes into that either. But however, percentage of it sure does. I mean, that's okay for, for tourism to make some of the money off of it as you're going down through there. But I'm just saying that I would assume that percentage of it would go into this other bucket.
I would say one of the things that needs to be upgraded at the park are the restrooms.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so that would be a secondary to this, you know, if we have those restrooms.
That's in the initial plans they've got this string.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I didn't get into the restrooms, the table, anything like that. But I, that would be included as part of the project. Yeah, if you're gonna have more people down there, you're gonna need more facilities like that. You know, you're not gonna run portal outs every two weeks and stuff like that. Uh, so that would be part of the plan.
Funnel's coming up, you don't have to worry about cleaning.
Well, they're flowing down the river.
And they're putting back, back where they were here from. And referring back to Keith with that, with that fund, whatever revenue, because the town, I'm seeing as the, who's gonna clean it up? Well, not just floodplain cleanup, we're gonna have our employees down there. So are we gonna have to hire more employees, you know, the overtime on the weekends, the events? Um, who's gonna pay for all the trash bags and the cleanup there, the maintenance of the bathrooms? So we, or we, we would be taking on more additional employees too, and who's gonna pay for that?
Who's gonna man the gates?
Who's gonna man the gates? Um, I know the, the liquor and, you know, people bringing coolers in experienced that with red light and boom, so we gotta watch that too.
Yeah, when you mentioned gates, you know, most of these other, yes, pavilion stages that I've looked at usually are like Lawrenceburg or I won't say Madison all the time, but, but just generally free community events to get people there. So, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be ticketed for everything and that's where, you know, tourism's kind of, you know, with our funds would be, uh, you know, financing, paying for those, that stuff to come in. That would just be part of our budget.
And there would have to be some little contract between tourism and the town stating that, you know, when this event occurs, you know, blah, blah, we are responsible for staff or cleaning.
Exactly.
Walk right up to their stage and listen to some pretty good bands or a group.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's.
It's almost like building a road with tax dollars and put a whole lot.
And when I was talking about.
How many times you're gonna charge people for it?
When I was talking about revenue off of it, I'm not talking about, I'm not thinking, I'm sitting down there charging people to come in there. I'm thinking about people are gonna wanna book a fence there.
When you start to wait.
Yeah, exactly. You know, we already have a lot of people booked events down there at the parks.
Yeah, we were shelters now.
Be at something that sounds, yeah. So I mean.
Basically, I agree with that. Basically, you know, the revenues would go, we have to go over the agreement where that stuff goes. But, um, you're asked about the twenty years later. Yeah, I would say if we built this, you know, in two thousand and five and we're getting towards the other, the, the twenty year lifecycle, I think we'd be back at the state if that's the direction you wanna do. Hey, we wanna. And we want to, you know, raise the tax back starting next January, you know, percent, two percent, depending what it was. Yeah, to renovate this facility, um, you know, I'll use my Cincinnati example again. They're renovating the convention center, the project I was involved in twenty years ago, um, with a tax, the same type of tax again. So, um, I believe they went to the state and got that extended.
Re-upped.
Re-upped, basically. So, uh, wherever sitting in these chairs in twenty forty five, you know, that's the easiest way is just to get it re-upped down the road. I know Madison will hit the same situation with their trolley, they're running, you know, the trolley over there, uh, that's what they're using their money for.
Mark, do you have an initial projection of what we collect currently in hospitality and what this would mean to you on an annual basis?
Uh, the three percent we'd pull in about two hundred and ten thousand dollars based on twenty twenty four numbers. Um, you know, tourism, we, the far five percent is, uh, obviously bigger than that. Uh, so we get two pieces, we get the commission or hotel tax side and, uh, gaming, uh, percentage from admissions there. So our total budget, um, is about five hundred and fifty, um, in toward, uh, this tax, based on the last four year numbers I have, would be about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, if you would like to get a six percent interest rate, uh, a billion and a half dollar project, whatever, twenty years would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So there, you know, you could go up to two million dollars on this project if you spent every dime on it.
Right.
But that would be totally irresponsible on our part.
So, so with that said, and I think that's why these campsites are such a critical piece here, because when you're looking at the county as a whole, and including BB, I'm gonna guess it on the hospitality side. You're probably less than seven percent of your hospitality tax comes out of BB itself, BB principal. That means the county is the one.
Absolutely.
The biggest load. And primarily right now, that's all Belterre. God forbid we have a Black Monday like Rising Sun did, and now their casino's gone. Now, now we have a problem. Who carries, somebody asked the question, who carries that loan? And that's gonna be, that would be a very big question. Who carries the loan if a Belterre walked out here? But better than that, I I agree with Kim, there is a, on the website, the state website, I thought it does state. I think we need to go back and look at it on these campsites to see if we can charge that five, that that five percent to them.
I agree completely, that's your fault.
That that should be, that that's the cushion that you're going to need.
And the greater number to start with.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's, and it's.
That's law.
Thirty days, I mean, let's face it, there's a lot of campsites in the county, the campers are there six months or longer.
Well, it's, I I believe what I say, this is, it's, it's primary business is thirty days and under.
Yes, it's thirty days and less, so it wouldn't affect everybody staying in campground.
So it seems to me like, I'm gonna try to put, try to sum up everything that we came up with here, move this along. It seems to me like step one is a D and R permit, which is on you. Step two would be, we would then have another one of these meetings to get approval. At the same time, we would set forth a committee. And at that point in time, we, the committee would would hash out the details of breaking down the dynamics of this from, you know, the committee having no financial authority to, you know, I, the, the locations of their meetings and the openness of that and blah, 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 blah. I mean, that's, you know, there's, I I know there's talk going around today about setting a committee, but we're just putting a committee together until we get. Go through step one and two. And so that's what I'm gathering, walking around this room, is, is everyone here in agreeance of that?
Yes.
You've already got, so you've already got.
Yeah.
Well, the soft approval, yes, but you don't have, you don't have, you got some not voted to actually oppose this tax yet.
No, we wouldn't do that until this presentation is brought to us.
That's what I'm saying.
Everything's done. You guys don't need us for anything until you're ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he needs D and R.
Yeah, 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 all that, I mean, you got twenty steps, so if you ask step one, I mean, the last step would be, here's our presentation to county council, we raised a tax for this. That's what I'm wanting to see, I want a full blown.
Me too.
Yeah.
I want financials, I want who owns this thing, I want everything for county council. We don't need to be in the planning, we need nothing to do with.
Yeah, and I, Mark, I I agree with where Lance is going here. I think you just said, we're gonna cover the the permits. I've also heard at the table, we're thinking you're covering, or at least I'm, I'm taking it, this was the question. You guys are gonna cover insurance, you're gonna cover permits, and you're gonna cover the engineering, uh, cost on this. Not, not just the D and R permit. That, to me, with seven hundred thousand dollars in your kitty, that's the front end part from tourism to get us to the, the boat. Yeah.
So that's what we need to see.
But we need to be able to explain to our ta, the taxpayers, how we're utilizing this, your commitment, your commission's commitment is going to be big enough, that's the front end.
I agree, I mean, like I said, um.
Would you guys agree with that as well, from our standpoint?
Yeah, the commission, that's the commission of record, you know, has that seed money to proceed and, um, you know, I agree with you that, uh, like I say, if you would, if you'd like to come Monday night, um, you know, talk to our, that commission.
I'm gonna fall back with Lance, I don't, I I don't think this is that meeting, but all I care about is same thing he cares about, at the end of the day.
We're, we're essentially your last.
Yeah, we're your last.
But, you know, I just want you guys to be part of the process too, you know, this is a community project, that's the way I look at it.
Or it's part of this.
I think that's the last thing we said.
You guys take, I mean, you know, we, we gave you guys permission to go forward and get with general assembly to get this passed, that was our commitment. Now we're at the end of the line, once you've done all your homework and everything's gonna work, you come to us for the tax. We're last, we don't need to be in the planning. I mean, that's just, I don't think we get in the way.
That's for us, that's for county council, we're not speaking for.
Yeah, that's different.
You guys just gotta work through your ownership deal and all that other stuff.
Your, your input is welcome at a time, let's be honest. Because, I mean, you guys are asking questions that need to be asked, and that's why we're here, so.
Well, you might even suggest a lease back to tourism from the town for, say, a dollar a year, something for fifty years. That's generally the way it's done when this is going to be on, uh, somebody else's property. But for the benefit of everybody, yes. Yeah.
Ultimately, the commission.
And the county wouldn't have to handle this money, that would all be handled. You know, that you handle only the money that comes in, that you give to us, and then she would be handling, or whoever's treasurer, handling the new account.
Yeah, I'm saying what, you got good? Yeah, the other thing, in, in the process of doing this, again, I'd like to hear, like to hear, you know, what's going on, one, between economic development, I still don't understand how this is not absolutely economic development. The other thing is, I know that there's like, um, you know, High River Byways and stuff like that, that's federally funded. And though, though I understand that that we're gonna have to take the initial, you know, and and prove that we're doing something like that, after that's started, then the High River Byways will probably kick in on. If if you did this in two stages, they would probably kick in a lot. And or once we get this entire project done, they may say, well, you got it, did good, but, uh, why don't we put in walking paths? Why don't we put in, you know, blah, blah, blah? I mean, that, that, this could very potentially be something really, really big for this area.
Cause they're still trying to tie in, they're trying to tie in the whole river.
They're trying to tie.
Yeah.
So, so, and any, any question is, yes, they are, their plan comprehensively right now is, is to try to tie events from Madison to Lawrenceburg to Cincinnati and 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 have something. So, you know, that's something I had on here even was, um, trying to work with Madison, Lawrenceburg. So if Lawrenceburg, I think there's on Wednesday night, is that right? Yeah, so they do theirs on Wednesdays, we do ours on, you know, have the same band come to us on Thursdays and then go to Madison on Fridays. You know, try to tie all three of them together, and though we're the smaller fish, not gonna get as many, we'll take what we can get, you know, type, types of. I mean, cause it could lead into the Dora district and all nine yards down, if if we're done, correct? So if anybody's got anything else, I, to the point, that's all. I like all you guys' models. So, yeah, I'll, I'll take a motion from our, our board of chair, have a motion from Lane, second, also, second by Keith on favor, our motion, our meeting's adjourned.
I'll make a motion for counsel.
Would you, Kim, go second?
I'll second.
Go, sir. On favors?